Good afternoon. This is the Salina City Planning Commission and we're going to start our meeting now. We're missing just one person, two, I guess, Wally and...
Two persons.
Two people. We'll begin with the approval of minutes from our October 16th meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as read. All those in favor vote aye please.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. And that brings us to new business. Our first public item is application CU-18-7 filed by Jones Gillum Rens Architects for the Lee Development LLC requesting a conditional use permit to allow multifamily residential apartments in a C4 district. This is at a property addressed to 248 to 254 North Santa Fe Avenue in Salina.
Mr. Chair, to indulge us while we're attempting to do minutes without Crystal, could we get, who made the motion and the second on the approval of minutes?
Commissioner Baffa made the first. The second?
Second.
Commissioner Olson, I'm sorry. I thought you could see.
So now we're ready for the regular agenda.
Thank you. Which again brings us to application CU-18-7.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a conditional use permit application. The request is to allow residential dwellings as the principal use of a building in the C4 Central Business District. The subject to this application is the former HD Lee Hardware Buildings at southeast corner of North Santa Fe and Elm Streets. And the owner presently is Lee Development LLC. The prospective developer is Flint Hills Holdings in conjunction with Overland Property Group. And the architect involved here is the firm of Jones Gillum Rens. The site we're looking at is 250 feet east-west by 230 feet north-south. There was a request last night to vacate an east-west alley that runs just along the south of that blue line. And that alley's 20 feet wide and if that alley is vacated, then that's going to make the site 250 by 250. And so the property across the street to the north is Salina Supply Company. Directly to the south of this on Santa Fe is a vacant storefront. And then we have, over to the east, we have Plumbing Company on Fifth Street and the U.S. Post Office. And then across the street to the west is the Air Gas Offices and what I still refer to as the rendezvous bar but is now the Vu Bar across the street. We provided you information about the Lee Company, who HD Lee was. And so this building is on the National Register of Historic Places and it's on the National Register of Historic Places both because of the architectural significance of the building and also the fact that it's associated with HD Lee and the HD Lee Hardware Company. These buildings date back to 1905 and they have 230 feet of frontage on Santa Fe Avenue. The buildings were last occupied by McKean Paper Company which discontinued business in 2005. There's a non-original one-story storage and refrigeration building located between the taller mercantile building and the original hardware building. And that was removed to allow an open-air plaza between the two buildings in 2008. And we noted this property has been on the National Register since 2008. And so as we indicated, the Flint Hills Holdings Group in partnership with Overland Property Group and Salinas Chodo, which stands for Community Housing Development Organization, has a contract to purchase this complex with plans to convert the buildings into loft apartments with also a mixture of office and commercial space in the ground floor storefronts. There are 53 rental units proposed in Phase One. And as we understand it, Phase One is the North Building or North Tower. And 33 percent of those units would be rented at market rates and the remainder being income-qualified units. And Flint Hills Holdings Group specializes in innovative real estate development using a variety of unique financing options and they have successfully completed numerous tax credit projects. And in this particular case, they're proposing to utilize a combination of low-income housing tax credits, historic tax credits, a home grant, and an enhanced property tax rebate to help finance this renovation. If any of you are familiar with the city of Lawrence, there's a warehouse complex east of the downtown area and somewhat similar building that was turned into the Polar Lofts and that project was done by this same development group. So the closing or transfer of property has not taken place yet and Michael Forstall is the current owner of the property. But the plans that you have in your packet have been prepared and submitted on behalf of the development group, Overland Property Group and Flint Hills Holdings. And so we are located in the C4 district. As we look to diversify and include mixed uses in the downtown area, that mixture includes residential housing. And so if you are, if you have a office or jewelry store on the main floor downtown on Santa Fe and you put an apartment above that, that would be considered an accessory use and that is permitted by right. If you are taking a building and you are converting it entirely or principally to residential purposes, that is a conditional use. And hotels and apartments are about the only two uses in the downtown area where some off-street parking is required. And so as we noted, the rationale for that is that the Salina Downtown Inc. wanted there to be a conditional use process for residential in the downtown because they didn't want to see prime storefront spaces be converted to residential space without some review process and a notice and a hearing. So this is the public hearing to review the fact that this has been proposed for conversion to residential use. And it's your role to determine whether this conversion from commercial to residential would be compatible with development in the surrounding area. And so we have sent out public notice to owners within 200 feet of this area. And on page four and five, we have summarized zoning ordinance requirements that relate to this property. And two things that we would point out that have asterisks by them on page four and five. Although our R3 district and the density standards are pretty high, this property is unique in that it has two five-story buildings. And so the density that's proposed for Phase One of the North Building, that falls within the density limits of the R3 district. To move forward with Phase Two to add another 53 units would put the density on this site at about 80 units per acre. And so that would require a density variance when Phase Two came forward. The other thing we wanted to point out is that there is a plan for providing off-street And that would be in the southeast corner of the site. And we've got John highlighting that, but we're talking about this area right, if you could go back, John. We're talking about this area. The parking that's provided there is only sufficient to support Phase One. And so from our perspective, the Planning Commission is reviewing Phase One at this point. This will rehabilitate vacant buildings and provide needed housing for local residents. We think this has the opportunity in combination with the Alley Entertainment Center to completely transform this block of downtown. And we do believe that adding this type of living space could contribute to the welfare and convenience of the public, both by adding to residential living opportunities but also putting a vacant neglected property into public use. And so there are some things that they're going to do to kind of modify and clean up the exterior but only to enhance its appearance. There's no substantial modifications that are being changed, no changes to the building footprint. There is plans to remove a one-story addition at the rear of the South Building. And so this project's not going to dominate or negatively impact the surrounding area because it's only going to enhance the appearance of an existing building. This change in use shouldn't create any additional burden on city utilities or services or impact drainage. There are some building roof runoff issues they're working with our engineering department on at this point, but there's not going to be any change in runoff or drainage patterns. There's just a better way, we think, to handle the roof runoff. And so as we pointed out, as a general rule, there's no off-street parking required for C4 uses. So if you have a store or restaurant downtown, you are not required to provide off-street spaces. But if you have a hotel or apartment building, you are. And staff has calculated that they'd be required to provide 45 off-street parking spaces and their plan provides 51 parking spaces. And we note that this is adequate for Phase One but not for Phase Two. The comprehensive plan states additional housing within the downtown area will provide stability to the area and create a true mixed-use center. Housing in the downtown area and within designated mixed-use centers should strive for higher densities. And if we have pointed out, it suggests that density should be in excess of 10 units per acre and in Phase One, this is 40 units per acre. So this we would consider to be a high-density development. So the plan for downtown Salina indicates that townhomes and apartments with a density of 10 units per acre or greater is a secondary use in the downtown area. And so while this is on Santa Fe, it's at the far edge of the downtown core. So we on page seven have made some suggested findings. We have found that Phase One plan conforms with all zoning regulations including parking. This will put a vacant neglected building into productive use and provide convenient living space. It's not going to dominate or cause substantial injury to surrounding properties. We have adequate public utilities and services for the project. Off-street parking is being provided and access is good. And this is at the periphery and not the commercial core of the downtown area. And housing is certainly encouraged under the comprehensive plan. So your options this afternoon would be to approve this application as submitted, approve it subject to certain conditions or revisions to the plan. You could postpone consideration of the application or deny the application if you don't think the required findings can be made. We have recommended several conditions of approval. One, we are currently working with the applicant's architects on a license agreement for some of the private improvements that will be located in the public right-of-way. And John, if you could go to that blow-up of the, I think it's the next one after this. So this just shows some of the streetscape features. And what they're endeavoring to do is to coordinate what they're doing out here in the streetscape on Santa Fe with what's happening there. And then the curb returns are going to be brought out, both on Santa Fe and Elm. And if you could go back to the site plan, back one, John. So they are looking at doing some head-in parking along the north side here and that will be addressed as part of the license agreement. Under our zoning ordinance, we don't count those spaces as meeting off-street parking, but if those are installed, then that will help with the parking situation. They're also, they're going to have some steps and an entrance here on Elm although the primary entrance will be on Santa Fe. But there is an effort being made to coordinate the applicant's design with our streetscape and design. And then that one condition being that the construction of Phase One conformed to the plans presented to and approved by the Planning Commission. If they go to a Phase Two, they will need a density variance to add an additional 53 units. And then when they come back for Phase Two, we would bring that site plan and their parking plan for Phase Two back to you prior to a building permit being issued. So a couple of things we just added as notes and we've been discussing. This property is located in Salina Business Improvement District Number One. They're not really doing any alterations that would require DRB approval, but if they demolish one of the newer additions, that will need to be reviewed by the Design Review Board and also the final plans for their surface parking lot because they are seeking historic tax credits. They will be working with the State Historic Preservation Office on preservation items. So the Heritage Commission locally will not be involved. And then we just wanted to note that the city has a special redevelopment area where building permit fees are waived and this is located within that area. And that is kind of an incentive we have to try to encourage infill and redevelopment. And so all building permits fees associated with this project would be waived. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions, any project-specific questions. You should refer to Jeff or Meg again.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Before we do that, Mr. Story, are you planning on joining us?
I'm a part of this. Mr. Story has indicated to me that he felt he needed to recuse himself from this.
So you're accusing yourself from this application?
I should. That's my question.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff regarding the application? And then we'll hear from the applicant and address questions to the applicant.
Could you explain in general terms of conditional use permits?
A conditional use permit is every zoning district that the city has has uses that are permitted by right. And then we have uses that have to be approved on a case-by-case, location-by-location basis. So in a residential district, if you want to have a group daycare home, you can have one, but in order to do that, you have to apply for a conditional use permit, which means that your neighbors are notified, there's a public hearing, and the Planning Commission must find that that is a suitable location for that use. So in residential districts, schools, churches, daycares can be approved on a case-by-case basis. In the C4 district, there are a number of conditional uses in residential apartments on the ground floor or as a principal use is one of those. So conditional use is a discretionary item. When you review the plans for the police department shooting range out on your drive, shooting ranges were identified as a conditional use, which means they have to be approved on a case-by-case basis. They're not just permitted by right.
Mr. Andrew, the first phase is north or south buildings?
As far as I can tell, that the first phase is the North Building.
And is there any retail in this building or is it all residential?
There is going to be some office space. We understand that there's plans to try to have a restaurant space and perhaps some outdoor dining. And you're going to have to help me, John, because I don't know what floor you're on. Okay, so this is the first-floor plan. And you probably have to blow it up to read the spaces, but as we understand it, there would be office space in front and there would be apartments towards the back. And then this is the plaza area here and I think the long-term plan is to have some sort of eating establishment there and perhaps have dining out in that courtyard. But there will be apartments on the first floor as well as floors two through five.
And the curb extension, is it greater than what would be there now?
Yes. So on Elm Street at the corner of Elm and Santa Fe, the curb will extend out into Santa Fe and also further into Elm than what it does today. And by extending, if you want to go back to the site plan, John. So by extending the curb out here at this corner, that's going to deepen the area and make more space available for head-in parking.
And it won't, it won't actually though, be an issue in terms of traffic?
No, because Elm, the paving width for Elm far exceeds what is needed for a two-way street.
Well, I'm just asking because the only one I know, I can think of like that is on the north side of Kansas Wesleyan's football field.
On Claflin.
And you have to jog into the other side of the street to go around them. So this street's wider than that street, that's my question, I guess.
I would say it's, it is not wider than Claflin. It's probably on par with that, but I think the difference is, is that the city is doing this curb extension and we've already done all the measurements and the cars, if they're parked here, will be inside the line that's protected by that curb, which is not necessarily the case on Claflin.
Right. Are there other questions?
Why is that curb being moved before the project is approved?
The curb is being moved regardless of whether the project is occurring. What we're doing in the downtown area on Santa Fe is we're giving Santa Fe a diet and it's going to go from four lanes to three lanes. And the sidewalks are going to be widened and extended out into the street so the traveled way will narrow. And then what we're trying to do at all the street intersections to encourage pedestrian safety is to bump out the curbs so that pedestrians have less distance to cross at the intersections than at the center. So at this point at Santa Fe and Elm, the curb will be brought out and so there'll be a narrower length of Elm to cross and a narrower width of Santa Fe to cross. So those curbs are being extended irregardless of this project as part of the streetscape.
It's the same like at Martinelli's?
Yes. So at every intersection, we're creating additional space for pedestrians and wider sidewalks and narrowing the traveled way.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Andrew before we hear from the applicant?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, all these different means of financing with tax credits and tax rebates, I was just wondering if you happen to know if they are requiring any energy efficiency type of, or do they have any energy efficiency type of requirements?
I would defer that question to the designers.
Other questions for staff regarding the application? No? A representative from GIN, that would be you?
Jeff Gillum, Jeff Gillum with Jones Gillum Rens and I'm representing, of course, Flint Hills and Overland Property Group. We're really excited about this project. As many of you know, this has been ongoing for many, many years. There were some developers that tried it almost 10 years ago and they couldn't get the financing. Overland Property Group and Flint Hills have secured the financing. We've worked with the city commission almost two years now. They've supported this project and they've actually supported it with some financial gifts. We are working currently with historical tax credit people and they're very excited about the project and they're finalizing the financing. We have approved state financing through the State Housing Authority. They're very excited about the project. So again, we're really pushing forward, we're excited, things are moving along. It's fitting in really nice with the streetscape. As Dean said, we've been able to meet with Dan Stack and try and run that around the building that they were not going to originally do. Couple other items here. Again, we feel this is just a great support issue for the whole downtown redevelopment, to bring mixed use downtown, to provide some good loft-type residential features. And I might back up. John, could you put the, that floor plan up there where they were asking about commercial just to make sure that's very clear?
And I think it's just, I don't have a pointer, so I'm just going to step over here. So again, if you blow up, this is actually the basement, so don't get confused there. This is the North Building. This is the open courtyard that we will be redeveloping. The second phase is to bring in more commercial space down the corner. If you could scoot it over, John, to the San Fe, there you go. This is all open for a tenant. So they are leaving, we are finishing it, but we're opening that up for commercial or retail or office tenant. This is the main storefront, if you will, on Santa Fe. It's not much of a storefront, but we will be opening that back up. As you may recall right now, all the big windows and everything there have been ripped in. This will go back to the original historic storefront that was there, opening that up, putting in new steps. We'll be redeveloping the restrooms. This would be an office for that. This could be a secondary tenant or it could be one large tenant. And again, that hasn't been decided yet. Those would be both open up onto this courtyard. The Dreams, which is not part of this project, is the next building we're looking at trying to develop a restaurant area that would support some outdoor seating in the courtyard. The part that's residential is a little bit less than half of the lower floor. And as most of you know, this is not really visible from Santa Fe. It is more of a loading dock portion of the North Building that faces Salina Plumbing Supply. And then with the parking, we do have access so residents can come up and enter from the backside. So any questions on those plans? To make sure that was really clear.
Would you interest Commissioner Good's question regarding energy efficiency or requirements for such?
Yeah, and again, being part of some of the tax credit programs that we are getting, the State Housing Authority will mandate that we do follow most of the IECC, the energy codes. So they have a lot of set of standards and stuff that we will be regulated to follow. So we will have a lot higher efficiencies in insulation, windows, HVAC equipment, et cetera.
Nice.
So yes, thanks for asking.
Thank you.
One thing I might clear up, John, if you go back to the site plan, I don't want to take too much of your time.
The curb thing, I think Dean did a pretty good job explaining. Again, city of Salina is doing all of this. They have already identified this curb line which we follow. I want to make real clear, the existing curb does align with this. This has not come out any further into the street. But we did use with the parking, the line that the city of Salina established and trying to clean this up and match that whole streetscaping along Santa Fe.
And that will be addressed in the license agreement between the city of Salina and the property owners.
So with that, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Ms. Gillum, are you speaking?
Yeah.
Yeah? Is there anyone from the public that has questions or would like to speak? Yes. Sir? Yes, sir. Sure. Your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Bob Butts. I'm the president, owner of Solana Iron and Metal Company. We are to the northeast of said property. I don't oppose this project. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. I mean, Solana Iron and Metal's been at that location well in excess of 100 years and supports downtown development. But I just, I don't know how these, this property owner, this developer feels about having a recycling facility, scrapyard that close to the northeast is where we are. So I guess I just wanted to point out that we don't oppose the, oppose the project, but just wanted to point out that we've been there quite a long time, as this building has, and intend on staying so.
Thank you.
Can you point out on the map? We're at... John, are you doing that?
That's it. That's the office, and then the yard extends right there. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
If I may clarify on that, just real quick. We've taken that into consideration, and we don't see that being an issue at all. We do have the large office building on the corner that somewhat screens all that, so it's not an unsightly thing from our apartments. We've been up on the roof and looked, and so we don't see any issues at all. We hope to be good neighbors.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back up here for discussion. Commissioners, do you have questions, or would you like more information from anyone? Or a motion?
I recommend to the City Commission, we approved the conditional use application as submitted upon finding that the requirements of the Solana code have been satisfied.
So that would be the four staff recommendations that you're speaking of?
Yes.
Because that's one of them, but there are three others.
Just want to clarify, for this particular item, we are not recommending to the City Commission because you are the approval body, not...
Yes, this would be an approval of the application.
You're not recommending approval. You're moving that the Commission approves, so.
And I'm sorry, there was a second. Commissioner Eisenhower? It has been moved and seconded to approve application CU-18-7, along with the four staff recommendations. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, vote aye, please. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, John.
To clarify, Jeff, that's the final decision on this application, and it doesn't have to go to the City Commission, so.
Thank you for coming tonight. It's an exciting project. I look forward to it. I think people have for a long time. That would bring us to application item number Z-18-22 and number P-18-44A filed by Mark Wingo. Is he here?
Mr. Wingo is not here, but the designer of that project, as well as Jones Gillum Rens. And so Jones Gillum Rens is serving as representative for Grain Belt Supply on this project. And so item 3.2A and B are related in that we have a piece of property that Grain Belt Supply has acquired. And that property is located directly north of their current facilities. And for historical reasons, that property came into the city as an agriculturally zoned property and is not zoned for industrial use, and it was also not platted. And so item 3.2A is a request to rezone the property from agricultural to heavy industrial. And item 3.3 is a request to plat the property, which would create one industrial zone lot and one C5 zone lot that already has an existing building on it that has been used by a commercial tire company. So your first item of business would be to consider the request to rezone the property in the eastern portion from A1 to I3 to create a unified I3 zoning and building lot. And then the second part of that would be item 3.2B, which would be to approve a plat of the property. And the property must be platted in order for any zoning change to take effect. So, John, I don't know if you've got to the drawings that show the powder coat addition, but it's, you need to get into probably the third or fourth drawing here. And keep going. All right, if you could blow this up a little bit. So the, this is an existing powder coating building here. They're doing an addition to it. A portion of that addition is extending onto this property at the rear that they have acquired. This is where Commercial Tire is over here. So the zoning on here is already C5 and would remain. The zoning here is A1 agricultural because this property has never been platted. And that would be changed to I3 so that this could be an expanded industrial site. So item 3.2A is to consider whether to rezone this piece right here to I3 industrial. And item 3.2B would create a plat that creates a lot for commercial tire and a lot here for future industrial expansion. So with that, I'd be happy to address any questions.
Are there questions about this plat? Would you like to address, Commissioner?
Unfortunately, Commissioners, I'm not going to be able to help you out too much on this. This is mainly being done by the owner, so if you do have any questions, I'll sure try to address them other than that.
Thank you.
We have issued a footing and foundation permit for the addition, but in order for any part of the building to extend onto this property to the north, that needs to have an industrial zoning designation, so that is why this is before you this afternoon.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public? No? Then we'll close the public hearing, so Commissioners, we are determining whether or not we're changing this from agricultural to industrial zoning. Any thoughts, questions? And then we'll move on, whatever the result is, to the actual...
Do we not need a motion to change the zoning?
Yes, we need to have separate motions. There is on page... Page six of your report, if you concur with the findings that we've permitted, a motion should be made to recommend approval of the requested zoning change from A1 to I3, subject to satisfactory plating of the property. So that would be our recommended motion for 3.2A.
So moved?
It's been moved and seconded to approve application Z-18-22. And that is contingent or would require final plat approval?
It is, we're just saying that it's contingent on completing the plating process, which means you approving the plat and the plat getting signed and recorded by the owner. But we, if something happens with the plat and it doesn't get recorded, then there will be no zoning change, so that's why we include that language.
Excellent. Any other questions or discussion? If not, we'll vote. Mr. Storey, you're voting? Everyone in favor, vote aye, please. Any opposed? All are in favor. Motion carries. And that brings us to the other side of that application, P-18-44A. Same property, same applicant. This is approval of a combined preliminary and final plat.
We would recommend approval of the plat as proposed, subject to a condition that if they were to construct a new freestanding building on Lot 2, that they would need to do a drainage analysis at that time. So page three of the report, our recommendation would be to approve the plat, subject to that condition.
Does anyone have questions, or anyone from the public, or Mr. Gillum? No one? Everyone is on topic here? So there's one condition that is suggested by the city, and that is that there would need to be a drainage, or drainage analysis.
A drainage study or drainage analysis if they were to building, new building.
Do I hear a motion?
I'm sure they would be okay with that. That's what they need to do.
I think we would approve that condition.
Do you know who this civil was, Dean?
Cobb Alley Engineer.
Commissioners?
I move we approve the final plat for Grain Belt Subdivision Number 3, reference case P-18-4/4A. That's the recommendation to the City Commission?
It's an approval.
Yeah, you are approving this plat, so.
It's an approval of that application, and that would be with the condition?
With the condition.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application P-18-44A, along with the condition that if they are to construct a building, that they would do a drainage analysis. All those in favor, vote aye. Aye. Any opposed? Again, the motion carries. Thank you again. That completes our public hearing items for this evening and brings us to administrative items.
We have no administrative items for this evening. We would just clarify that the, when your recommendation on the outdoor advertising signs went to the City Commission, we had come up with the word or suggested language of adjacent to the interstate, and that was further refined by the City Commission. So the final language was locations within 200 feet of the interstate right away. That was a more precise term than adjacent, it was felt. So that has been passed by the City Commission. And then we are going to come back to you at your next meeting on the 20th, and we'll talk about things like brightness limits and different ways of measuring brightness or over brightness for electronic changeable copy signs. So that, that will be the only item on your November 20th agenda.
Thank you.
And then the other item, and we don't know where we are on that, but we do know the Planning Commission will be involved, is the City Commission gave direction to the Chief of Police to work relocating the location of the proposed Police Department shooting range to a location on West North Street that is not currently in the city limits or platted. And so this body approved a conditional use permit for a shooting range out on Yost Drive. But again, as I noted, shooting ranges are conditional use wherever they are located. So if the facility relocates to West North Street, then you will be reviewing an application for that location. The timing of that, we're hoping to get that before this, before the end of the year, but we're still working with the landowner and Police Department.
Thank you. Any preliminary discussion items, or that's basically what you've been doing? Unfinished business or other business? I just have one thing. I, and Ms. Driscoll may be planning a brilliant presentation, but I was wondering if we could have some kind of report about those that have traveled recently for planning meetings? Have you attended recently some planning meetings?
Yes.
Yes, exactly. Are you planning on presenting that to us in some format? Or would you like to speak briefly on what happened or what's going on in the scene?
Yeah, I mean, I can speak briefly to it. Dustin and Dean were both there, so the three of us were there. As far as presentations, I think what we tried to do was kind of team up to go to things that we thought were relevant with projects that we knew were upcoming over the next year. I also was looking at different consulting firms. We're due to update the comprehensive plan. So definitely was kind of looking at some of the booths for firms that do that, just so that we were aware of kind of who's doing what. We attended several sessions. Better. We attended several sessions that are, you know, looking for examples of other cities. I went to a couple housing sessions. I think we looked at some co-drafting just to see if there are other ways. I think Dustin and Dean went to one on like zoning yoga, on how to be flexible with your zoning ordinance and how that works. Yeah. We looked at, I think for me, and these two can speak to this for them, but for me, the Bay State Conference or the Regional Conference is always about examples and about finding out who's doing what so that we can make phone calls easily to ask, "Okay, presentation was nice. How did that really go? Can we see examples of that?", those types of things. So I was really interested in looking at examples of comprehensive plans or also how economic development was being tied into things like downtowns or arts and cultures to see how we could work that into the ordinance we'll be working on over the winter for downtown, dealing with, you know, just making it more possible to do all kinds of activities down there, whether it's food trucks or vending or events, things like that. And I would encourage Dean and Dustin to add anything that they got out of those.
Thank you. That's really interesting. I followed a little on social media. Do you have a comment?
I went to two. I focused my interest on the challenges of regulating short-term rentals and how those affect neighborhoods and different things. And it was interesting that in one case, well, actually in both cases, the planning staffs did not, it wasn't their issue. It wasn't anything they brought up. It wasn't something they wanted to work on. But in both communities that presented, it was citizen complaints to the governing body that resulted in the planning staff having to work on regulations addressing short-term rentals. And it is just a fact that when you have a solidly owner-occupied residential neighborhood and you have one dwelling and neighbors see constant turnover and change of who's there and unsupervised activities and different things, that they get concerned about not knowing what's going on with that residence. And so there were presentations put on by Kansas City, Missouri, and Columbia, Missouri, on how they are dealing with that. And the other issue associated with that is just the equity differences between somebody who wants to be a bed and breakfast and is regulated by the state and pays transient guest tax versus an Airbnb that might not be adhering to the same rules. So just trying to make sure that there is a level playing field for short-term stays. So I found that interesting, and I also found it interesting that it wasn't... A lot of times planners will bring something to the commission that they want. They didn't bring, planners didn't bring it to the commission. The citizens brought it to the planners.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, did you have any comments about your time?
I think one of the most interesting sessions that I attended is talking about walkable communities, walkable neighborhoods, and what differentiates them from other more vehicle-driven communities or neighborhoods. communities or, or neighborhoods and some of the characteristics that those types of properties have. And how they, they do tend to, in addition to being more walkable, they, they tend to hold their value more. They don't have a, a big difference on the front end when the development is complete and when the houses are originally sold, but as time moves on and marches on and the houses are resold, they do have a higher resale value than their counterparts where you have a, a big garage out in the front of the house, two-guard garage, two-car driveway and, and really automobile-oriented. And it was just, it was a nice session. It was, it was interesting to see the differences and some of the characteristics that do make a more walkable neighborhood and how that's different, so.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions for them?
Anything about tiny homes?
Yes. Well, I, I think they, they came up in several of the affordable housing options of just kind of discussing how code can be amended to address those, but we also did talk to some of Wichita's staff about some of the challenges and advantages that they're dealing down there with. And just looking at, you know, there's kind of a big difference between taking a large plat of land at the edge of a city and making it kind of a tiny house village versus starting small with one or two. And some interesting discussion on, you know, starting to have people understand that tiny home doesn't always have to be on a wheel, on wheels, like that's, has a name, but I mean, smaller housing cottage courtyards, some of those things are, are very doable, but some of it's about scale and just trying to match cost of building. I mean, that, that just, it went from, from Kansas to Missouri and I'm pretty sure when we go to Quad State next year, it'll, it'll go to the others. It's, it's just, demand is there, but it's just not at a, at a volume that makes it easy to purchase materials at affordable rates, to bring crews in, to build and, and then to build at an affordable rate. And so when you're just doing these one or two units, it, it's really hard to make it truly affordable without assistance. So tiny homes and, and, and smaller density is definitely one of the ways that people are looking at that.
Thank you.
Scott City High School built a mobile home, really, tiny home on wheels for twenty-one thousand dollars. Now I'm imagining that it might cost another twenty thousand dollars to hook it up to utilities and put it on a slab and remove the wheels. And forty thousand dollars to me is pretty affordable. And I, I think that there may be some demand for that type of house at that price in Salina.
Well, I can tell you there are several entities working on, on various affordable housing projects that I think you're going to see fold out over the next year. It's a little early to kind of throw some of those out at the moment. What we are finding though, that really is, anything under a hundred thousand dollars is, is pretty difficult. It's, it, it's easy to do back of the napkin math and I, I totally understand where you're, you're coming from, but by the time you hook up to utilities, by the time you do several other things, plus you still have to keep some neighborhood character. Those, those tiny houses that are on the back of cars, it, it looks fine when they're on the back of a car, if you plop those into a lot. And where we see pushback in other communities that have done that is you get four or five of those together and the rest of the neighbors, even in a denser neighborhood, are like, hmm, that, that's not, that's not what our neighborhood looks like. So what we've seen be successful is where you start off with kind of smaller cottage style and start looking at one or two of those on a lot. And as those start to become kind of more normalized, then you start seeing people come around to the idea of maybe three or four smaller units is a possibility. But just, because the pushback that you'll hear and when we, we've seen it in research and it comes up in sessions and stuff, is that they end up kind of looking like camps, not like neighborhoods. So trying to kind of find that balance is a real challenge. So when we talked to rural communities, they were saying, go smaller, but start small in the number and the, the height of den, or the amount of density that you try. And that's what we were hearing.
Thank you. We'll save the whole, we should schedule another study session on that subject, but I will say that I have this discussion with numerous groups going on right now, both here in Salina and all across the state. There are other issues. We can build them, but they have to get financed, so, and there are no comparable sales and there's layers of issues that have to be addressed, as appraisers would tell you and bankers and lenders. So I think there's going to be a great partnership in this to see that it happens, but it's going to take more than just choosing appropriate scale.
And just, just for the commission's benefit, because we haven't seen one of those types developments in some time, although we've seen them on individual infills, we have a provision for what we call a residential design manufactured home and we have a number of those around town. There's one at the northwest corner of College Avenue and South Street on your, at South Street and College Avenue, the northwest corner, as you're going towards Ace Hardware, there's a house there that burned down. They put a manufactured home back on that lot, but we have requirements that allow residential manufactured homes, but they have to have a pitched roof and if the neighbors have a porch, it has to have a porch. If the neighbors have a garage, it has to have a garage. And so what we're seeing and hearing about as relates to tiny homes or what I prefer cottage-type homes, is that you still want to make sure, just like we do with manufactured homes, that they do blend in with the neighborhood characteristics, so.
It strikes me that that manufactured housing element makes it more possible that we could meet the economic issues. And some of them are very, very well-built. You can really specify in the factory.
They're very efficient. They're very modern.
There are companies who build manufactured homes that meet the residential building code. And so they're factory-built, but they're essentially equivalent into a stick-built home. But we haven't seen that widely used.
Together, smaller pieces though gives you the opportunity to change the shape from just a box, you know, to smaller elements or a couple offset, all kinds of things I've seen and that's.
Like Wee House. Wee House is great. If you haven't checked it out, go to WeeHouse.com. They are components that can be assembled into large ones from small. It's super interesting. Ms. Driscoll, did you have a, another?
I think the only thing I would add is just, one of the things that we're seeing in housing and it, and it comes up in the session, whether that's what it's titled or not, and we're seeing it in literature coming out of planning, is trying to find innovation in home building. And I think I mentioned this when we did the joint study session, that in looking at factors of what makes housing affordable and when we look at our history, we've had really very little innovation in how we build a home since the turn of the century. It's still sticks, you know, mortar, you know, it's just, it's the same wiring, it's just, we've gotten a little bit more fancy on our nailing patterns or different safety requirements and different materials and, you know, but a house is still built kind of like a house. And so I, I foresee, you know, one of the trends that we're, we're going to keep seeing is innovation in buildings. So looking at new products, both for environmental reasons, but for efficiency reasons and for size, you know, how quickly can it get produced? Because if you can't produce en masse at a site because you don't have enough demand, can you produce somewhere else and then ship them somewhere? And you know, there's been, I, I went to a session at National that was like the new mobile home. And it wasn't really about a mobile home, but that concept that housing can be manufactured somewhere and what does that future look like? So definitely things we're keeping eye on.
Well, if they can make it out of a 3D printer, which they have, then I think that there's probably a resolution to all of this and it's an exciting future for housing, but it's going to take a lot of, a lot of involvement from a lot of different people. And there are a lot of people talking about right now. I want to thank everyone from the city that's attended these meetings because I have been there with city staff and they're very recognized and they're very capable, of course, and our city always presents an image of something that's moving forward. So thank you all, because I know that you were great representatives of Salina. Any other questions or business?
I'll just remind you and we'll get the date, but there is sometime in December supposed to be a joint city and planning commission, city commission study session on the North Broadway, or not the North Broadway, but the Broadway corridor north of Crawford.
It will be before a commission, city commission meeting?
Yes. So it'll be before, on Monday before a city commission meeting, but it'll be a joint meeting to which you will be invited.
And this will almost bring us to the end of the year. So at the end of this year, we'll have some kind of meeting where we review the things that were done.
Accomplishments and goals.
And that will be in December or January?
January.
January. Excellent. Anything else? Great.
Adjourn.
Let's adjourn. Thank you.